Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Otomo City Council meeting. We do have a Board of Health meeting tonight before our regular council meeting. But before we start with that, would everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and start with our Board of Health meeting, and Chris will take the roll call.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number eight on October 18th, 2022, as presented. Recommendation: approve the minutes.
The recommendation is presented.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 301 North Graves in the city of Otomo, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public or the condemnation hearing, and I believe, Zach, you're going to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. The structure at 301 North Graves was originally placarded in April of 2022. The deficiencies at that time included structural damage to the roof, some broken and missing windows. The building was open to the elements. There were nuisance issues in the yard. There was lack of utilities. During the placarding period, the city has had to mow the property as well as abate nuisances of a cleanup on the property. There's currently no repair plan, and the property remains open to the elements, continues to deteriorate. The contract holder for the property was reported to us that he may be deceased. The deed holder has not made any contact with our office. There have been two people at different times who've claimed to be family members of the contract holder, who have asked for permission to be inside the property, but they've never been able to demonstrate a property interest in the property, and so we weren't able to issue any permission to anybody who couldn't show they had right to the contractor, right to the property. So at this point, there's still been no permission granted to be in the property, and no one submitted a repair plan. These are some photos of the condition outside, which is the only part we've been able to see. There's some pretty significant damage to the roof, holes in the roof that would suggest there's leaks, obviously some damage to soffit, things like that, broken windows. Lack of something there on the garage, some issues with the roof on the back as well, more broken windows. I believe that's all I've got for photos.
Does Council have any questions for Zach?
Just one real quick one. You mentioned that somebody did come forward about the having an interest. Was that person or persons informed of the legal instruments that were necessary to prove their interest in the property?
So I don't know to what extent we told them what things we would accept, but I know that we told them, you know, if this is in probate, then you need to speak to whoever's working with that estate. If there's some document you can produce from an attorney that shows your interest in it, then we'd be able to grant permission. But we look at the recorded owner and the recorded contract holder, and those would be the only people that we'd want to be able to allow to go into the building.
And how long ago was that conversation had?
I don't have the dates in front of me. I think there might be somebody here who wants to speak on this issue, and they might be able to talk about when they came in.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions for Zach? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to come up and speak? When you come up, would you state your name and your address, please?
My name's Cheryl Jordan, or Cheryl Kany. I am Brian Jordan's ex-wife. I am Donnie Suttl's ex-sister-in-law. We contact 301 North Sheridan Avenue is our address. We contacted the Health Department last week. We were gaining interest to the property until today for the hearing. I forgot the paper in the truck for the permission to enter. I have here a legal paper that shows that Brian is the executor over Donnie's estate. So in other words, he is Donnie as of right now for the time being. We are, we were dropped in our lap as of July 18th, when Donnie passed away. At that point in time, Donnie did not allow anybody to enter the house, to do anything with it, to do anything with the properties. We had to abide by Donnie's wishes when he was alive. We are, well, you know, we can't get it off the condemned list immediately, by no means. But we would like to have an opportunity to at least try to get it sold to somebody that would fix it up, repair it, or tear it down for the land, whatever they would like to do with it. But we would like to be given the opportunity to do this, but both myself and Brian, Brian is disabled. But we would like to at least be able to try. It was his brother's house. There's stuff in it that still needs to be removed. Like I said, we were dropped on it. The young lady that was supposed to take over it was his niece, and she backed out again. So that leaves it to me and Brian to do. I know that it's extensive damage done. I know this, okay? The siding on the garage was just done, not more than probably two weeks ago. They took the siding off the house or off the garage. It was a family member that did it. They did not have permission to do it. They should not have done it. They took some other things that went with the house that should have been left there. They took down the weeds, left them in piles. I'm not going to tell you they didn't do this stuff. But we need an opportunity, since it was just dropped in our lap, to take care of the situation, because Donnie would not allow anybody to do anything to his properties.
When did you say you got the property? It was given over to you?
We've got the property on, sorry, I forgot who I'm talking to again. We got the property on, we got the executor papers on 8/12 of 2022. But we got those for Amisha to take over the house. Amisha Burtlow is her name now. She was supposed to take over the house and fix it up and move into it. Well, now she's decided to move out of town up north somewhere, and she's not going to do anything with it. So they didn't bother to tell us until last week that they weren't going to do anything. We immediately went to the Health Department and got access to go into the house to start removing some of the stuff and assess more of what needed to be done to it. It's just, we don't have the, we didn't have the time to take care of anything, because we didn't know with Donnie not allowing us to have any access or any acknowledgement of it. The Health Department has copy of the executor papers.
But is the executor papers that you got on August 12th citing you as the executor or this other person?
Brian, my husband.
Okay.
I talk better than he does, because he has some health issues.
That's Brian Jordan, right?
Yes, and I got the mouth on me, so I'm the one that usually takes over everything like this.
So I got a couple of questions. Are you guys wanting to rebuild the house, or you just, do you just need time to get Donnie's stuff?
We need to, we need time to get stuff out of it, and we need to also get time to possibly sell it. No, we don't want the, we don't want to take the property. We don't.
Okay.
But we would like to have-
I'll be honest with you, this house is really far gone. Like, I'm not sure that you're going to be able to get really a whole lot of interest in rebuilding the house. Somebody might tear it down and take the property.
Well, that's what we thought.
But, and honestly, like, in our market, I don't know that somebody would be, but if you guys need time to get the personal belongings out of the house, that's a whole nother situation in itself. And I don't know what the rest of the Council would think about that or whatever. But, I mean, there's two different situations there. If you're wanting to just get your personal belongings out of it because of the death, and I understand that, or if you're actually asking us for time to look for a seller, a buyer, or whatnot to get it.
Right.
So we usually give, right after the hearing, if the property is condemned, we issue it upon one day of those sort of possessions.
But we don't know.
Okay.
I was going to say, I don't know if we could do it in 21 days with Brian's health and stuff. I'd be doing it by myself, literally.
Can you come forward?
The question was if the city were, I don't know if you can hear me through this or not. The question was if the city were to tear it down, what happens if it general? And the finding would be to tear it down and to assess the costs to the owner or owners of the property. What we usually do is bill to the owner, and if that's not paying, we assess it.
And the owner in this case would be the deed holder, correct?
Correct. And I know, that's one thing I don't know about. This is actually, this wasn't in the file, so maybe I've seen this, not being notes about it. The murder goes in the file about the executive issue. I don't know.
I can answer that. As of right now, the deed holder is Jim Leckton.
Yes.
He has had a motion to stop any interest where it comes to him. The contract was never taken out of Donnie's name. So that's what we were trying to do. We were trying to get the house into Amisha's name, because he gave it to Amisha. It's a big, it's a mess. But as of right now, Brian is Donnie. Anything that has to do with Donnie, Brian is the one that gives the okay. Brian's the one that has to sign the papers.
So, so just out of curiosity, since we didn't have this paperwork on file before, is that a notarized document that you can see?
So it is, it's right from the Iowa courts online, it's from the market.
Okay. So I guess my recommendation personally would be that we table this item until we could work through that information that we didn't know existed.
The gentleman at the Health Department, both of them, they had a copy of it. They took a copy themselves of it.
I understand, but he's saying that they didn't have it, so.
I would agree with, I would second what Mark's saying. We table this until this can be observed and.
So I guess, the only thing I guess I might say is I don't know that it changes much of anything. I don't know, the contract holders themselves can't sell the house, can't even, their interest at this point is just to sell the house to somebody else. Now, if there's a public good that comes from that, and the house.
It would be somebody that would, we looked at people that go into the condemned houses, redo them, and make it better for the community. We're not talking about a private owner. We're not, if we can't do that, then yes, we're going to have to tear it down. We understand that. But we thought maybe somebody might be able to make good of the house that does that for a living, not, not say, go talk to Joe Green and say, here, will you buy this house for us? And they just let it go for you to do anyway. No, we don't want that. We want the city to be better, but we can't physically or afford to do that for the city. So we were hoping somebody else would be able to do that for the city, is what we thought.
Can you come up?
I think that one thing is that all these parties were notified through our attorneys. So even though this document exists, our attorneys knew about it and notified the correct parties.
So I guess my question is, is Zach, can you go back two slides? Please. Or keep going, one more. Right there. So... Didn't you identify two people claiming to be family members of the contract holder have contacted the office at different times to request permission? They have not been able to demonstrate a property interest in the property. Isn't that right there?
This, this was the young lady that she's speaking of.
Okay, so this is a different, these are different individuals. Okay, that's where I was confused and needed that clarity, I think. Thank you.
I think it all came to light when our attorney sent out the paperwork, and that's where everybody decided they had interest in it.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think we should give them more time to get the belongings out that belongs to Donnie or the family members. And then at that time, I think you're really narrowing the field by somebody to take the property and redo it with the price of everything and everything else. Even if you gave it to them, people wouldn't probably take it, only because it takes a lot of work to get it up to where you could rent it or something like that.
And I understand that, because we can't afford to do it either.
Yeah, and we understand that, too. It kind of puts us at a bind, too. But since it sounds like everything's just now recently became your husband, ex-husband, then, yeah, then I think that it's only right that we give you guys time to at least get the belongings and stuff out of there that you would like.
Because some of it's his mother's, too, in which his mother passed away two years ago. And Donnie wouldn't let any of us have any of it out there.
And so, so Zach, if I heard you right, your recommendation, the staff recommendation is still to proceed with the condemnation of this property and allow maybe additional time for the relatives to get the personal effects out?
Yes, that'd be the recommendation. And we could give quite a bit of time, especially if you're, it's probably not going to be a mortgage or a contract actually to work out.
So you'll work with them to figure out a time period that would work for them with the health issues and concerns that they have to get the time, the stuff out?
And that will give them time to possibly find a buyer, too. So when we come back at that particular date, we could vote on tear it down, or you guys sell it to somebody else.
Not yet. There wasn't an official one?
No. No. So my recommendation would be condemn it today, and go through the same process we always do. We will be more generous with the time of removal possessions.
Okay.
They would still lose ownership of it, which.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
So I guess I have a question for the Council. There was talk about maybe tabling this based on further information and what Zach's recommendation is. Do you still want to table this? Do you want to proceed with the condemnation?
Proceed.
Right.
Jake cleared it up about the two people in there.
For send a motion?
I don't think he made a motion.
I didn't make a motion.
Oh, I thought you seconded his.
No, 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 I just said I would agree if we moved that way.
So are we voting to condemn it and then give her more time to get stuff out? Right.
Gotcha.
Zach, I would, as a personal thing, I would like to know more on the process of, because they are a deed holder, or that we have a deed holder and then we have a contract holder, because the contract holder did pass away, if you, if somebody could get us more information on what the actual process is, who is actually liable for this at this point? Because legally speaking, I would think that it would be the deed holder.
Yes.
But, and then with the contract, you know, you said we're not sure how that goes. So I would like to know for a fact who is responsible for the property at this point, as far as the money goes.
So our ordinary practice would be to bill the deed holder, and then we assess the costs to the property taxes, which is really the property's responsible. So we don't, as an ordinary practice, pursue a judgment, which is one of the things we could do and hold a person responsible. We usually assess that cost of the taxes. And so at that point, if somebody weren't to pay the bill, which is probably going to be $10,000 or more, then we would assess it to the taxes.
Well, if memory serves me correctly, we went through this exact, well, kind of exact same scenario with people that were alive, obviously, about four or five months ago with a young person that was, that had purchased a property on contract, and they were kind of out. So, I mean, we're kind of looking at the exact same scenario here as far as the correlation between the contract holder and the deed holder.
I do know that Jim and Julia had a motion to stop, where they were not liable for anything. They said that they sent it somewhere, but I'm not 100% sure where they sent it to.
As of today, there wasn't any change in the ownership. We saw it's still recorded where they're the deed holder.
Any other questions for Zach?
I guess mine's to Cheryl. Giving you guys more time to get inside the property and remove the items would work for you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 301 North Graves. Order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: approve the condemnation of the structures located at 301 North Graves.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Since this is the only condemnation hearing that's been scheduled for today, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
So moved.
Did you get that?
Flip on, yes.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Sound effects provided by Jean.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the Otomo City Council meeting to order, and Chris will take the role for this meeting.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. The next item is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's City Council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve that recommendation?
I will move to approve the agenda, but I would like to table item H1.
Second.
H1.
Does everybody understand what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
The next item is our City Administrator's report. So I'll turn this over to Phil Rath, our City Administrator.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I have a couple of guests here tonight to provide some updates and reports to the City Council. The first one would be Fred Zeisiger. He's the head of Main Street Otomo, and he'll provide a quick update, and then we'll go on to the next one. Thank you, Phil, Mayor and Council. I was supposed to be here in October, but I had a conference up in, oh, where was I? Spencer. So I'm giving this tonight. But I haven't given an update in a while. So I'm going to give a little update on what Main Street's been doing, at least this last quarter. Wanted to share that we do have a couple new businesses. If you haven't been there, the Antler guy just opened up on Second Street, 211 East Second, a really awesome store. We also have Splitting Hair Salon, which took over where Moon Locks was. We do have a new photographer moving in on Second Street as well, Jett O. and Joe. And then I wanted to congratulate my chic boutique on 10 years. She's been in business for 10 years. She's been downtown for about four and a half, so. A few recent events we did, Which Way to Maine on October 27th, we had about 420 kids come down with their families, and 13 outside businesses or organizations that decorated their trunks, and a good time was had by all. We've also hosted a couple of outside events in the district and in my office. We had the Chamber Association of Iowa and the Chapter of American Planners Association the next week. So good to have those visitors, especially highlighting downtown, and we welcome them in my office as well. The biggest thing that we've done this fall, I'll back up a little bit, we also hired a part-time person, Lindsay Newland, as a business coach, a business specialist for Main Street. And one of the first things that we kind of got her going on was this Business Builders Workshop. Of course, one of our biggest thoughts in downtown is filling the vacancies. And I've always thought that to do that, we have to, instead of, I think we'll be able to strategically go out and find some businesses to come to town, but for the most part, those entrepreneurs that are here are the ones who are going to fill those spaces up. So we did have seven entrepreneurs that took the class. It was an eight-class series, completed in four weeks, pretty intense, teaching business fundamentals and using coaches. Each class was, had a specialist that came in from the community that helped the entrepreneurs kind of develop a work, business plan. And then we did have a small amount of money that we were able to award at the end to three of the, three of the attendees. So our three winners were Bria Burton, Chthonic Company is her store. She makes candles. She's already in business, been working out of her house, sells online to Walmart and a couple other online stores. Erin Naylor, her and her husband just purchased the building downtown. Erin restores and conserves paper and is also planning on having a business downtown. And then Bryce Lica was another one of our winners, who also has property downtown and is planning a adult venue that I think is going to be quite interesting for people to see here in a few months. Like I said, though, we did have seven. A few of the comments afterwards are up there, but everybody thought this was our first time having this. We are going to do it again next fall, but was quite successful and are excited to do it again. And of course, between now and then, we still want to work with these seven individuals and getting them, getting them going, so. On September 20th, we had Michael Weigler, the Main Street Iowa Coordinator, come down and help us do some strategic planning for the next year, actually, the next three years, but really getting things started for the next year. And then on October 11th, we had Kara Lilly, also with the Main Street Iowa staff, came down. And there, I've kind of put in a quote, "Main Street Iowa does a strategic kind of visit every year," where I think this year they met with Kara and the mayor as well. But next year, we will have a national person come from National Main Street, and I think that date's set for May 23rd or 25th, I'm not sure which. Every year, we have either a person from the state or a person from the national level that comes to Otomo to check our progress. So back to the strategic priorities. We kind of came up, the board came up with three strategic priorities, the first of which is creating a culture of living in downtown Otomo. And how we plan to do that is develop exciting places to live downtown, support a vibrant, diverse, and active neighborhood. And our measures of success, really for the next three years on that, are 15 new apartments, 25 new residents, property values increased by 15% in the district as a whole, 40% in the properties improved. And then we also like to launch a new neighborhood association for downtown residents. The second priority is building trust and awareness of Main Street Otomo through enhanced marketing efforts and storytelling, improving community awareness of the services and progress within the Main Street Otomo District. To strengthen our community and build strong partnerships, we are making progress for business advancement, property development, community investment, and we want everyone to know about it. Our measure of success on that would be increase in organizational sustainability, increase in marketing, our marketing reach, and achieve program recognition on a national level. Strategy three is one that we've been working on for quite a while, but support businesses by fostering development, growth, success in downtown Otomo. Building, growing, and maintaining a network of like-minded community members, provide educational workshops, business seminars to help both new and existing businesses by eliminating obstacles. Measure of success on this would be increase first for occupancy, net gain of new businesses, increase tax sales numbers in downtown, and increase attendance at our classes and our events. So those will be the kind of the things that we'll be working on over the next year for sure, but really focusing hard on for the next three years. Shoot, I thought I had some pictures in there, but they disappeared. I wanted to kind of emphasize the importance on investing in downtown and why that's important. And I've kind of picked two buildings out here, 322 and 324, and I had a great before and after picture, but they're not there. To make you familiar with which buildings they are, 322 is where my chic boutique is, and 324 is now where Be Shabby is. But I wanted to point out, the square footage on both of those buildings are there, the first level and the second level. Back in 2006, 2007, that building was just used to storage, as a lot of the properties downtown, not anything else you could think of could really go in there. The values of each of those properties are listed there, the assessed value. 322 is listed at $10,320, and 324 was $10,070. Then we did the facade project, as you remember, and the first facade project was in the 300 block. That was finished in 2015. It takes a couple of years for those taxes to catch up there, but you can see that in 2017, those properties were assessed at $75,430 and $75,320, so quite an increase. Then, in 2016, Main Street Atoma got a grant to do 22 units in seven buildings. These two buildings were part of that project. One of those buildings, we created one unit, that's a two-bedroom, and the other one, we created two units, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. So again, it takes a little bit of time for that assessed value to get on there, but as you can see in 2022, what those properties are assessed at. We also have two, three units in both of those properties. I think there are five people that live in that building. And something that you don't think about usually on those things, I mean, you guys are thinking about taxes and how that increases, because the assessed value is how taxes are rated. That's how we pay for our firemen and our policemen and all of, all the things that we need to do downtown. The things you don't think about are about those people that are living downtown and what value they bring to the table. So that, you know, these are just rough numbers, but anywhere from $19,000 to $38,000 is basically what the economic impact of an individual that lives downtown brings to downtown. And that's pretty big, when you consider we have 110 units right now downtown and probably 156 people that live downtown. We need more of that. And then I just wanted to update us on our numbers. Since 2006, we have 70 new businesses downtown, 289 jobs, and that is actually down, but it's still 289 jobs more than we had in 2006. But we did lose some big numbers this year. We do have 60 new housing units, which is the same as it was last year, but we do have seven units that are in the process of being created. Our private investment has jumped to $28,456,403, and that's private investment. It's not city funding, that's not grant funding, that's what people in Atoma have put towards downtown. I think that's pretty awesome. And then the big number, of course, is 45,801 volunteer hours in that 16 years. To finish up, it is busy time. We have many events coming up. This Thursday, we have our holiday open houses. Last year, we had 18 businesses participate. This year, we have 20. So I think that's great. That's the night that we have the Kerry Drive to Downtown. We have 20 businesses that'll be open until 7:30, so I invite you and the public to come down and participate in that event. Everybody's very excited about it downtown. The weather's gonna be a little chilly, but remember, you're going from store to store, inside, outside, inside, outside, so, and everybody's got great refreshments. We have our Lights of Love tree lighting on the 25th. That'll be right out here in Central Park. We have 125 trees. They are just about sold, so if you haven't bought a tree and would like one, I have about seven left, so don't waste any time. The next day is Small Business Saturday on November 26th at 10:00 a.m., the intersection there of Market and Second Street, right in front of the Hoffman Building. We'll have the fire department there and be dropping our snowballs for the day. And you'll be able to pick up a snowball and go into a business and win a prize, and then, of course, shop small, love local. December 2nd, into the next month, but not that far away, we have our Around Town Downtown Holiday Home Tour, which we've done for a few years, but we haven't done it the last two years, so we're back on that. We've got three houses down, around downtown, that'll be open for tours, and then we have two downtown apartments that'll be, all be decorated for the holidays and invite the public to come view those. Tickets are on sale online, and by Friday, the tickets will be on sale in the Hotel Atoma as well. And then this was another thing that we started this year, was Business Brew. We've been holding those at Pallister Brothers. This next one's going to be at the Hotel Atoma on the mezzanine. We will have a property open for tour as well, but we invite any entrepreneur, any downtown business, anybody from the city, bankers, insurance agents, anybody that's interested in business to come and join us for that. It's always a fun event, and it really kind of breaks down those barriers and gets people talking about great stuff. That's it. Anybody have questions?
When will Santa be here?
Santa will be here Thursday night, and he will also be here Saturday for Small Business Saturday on the 26th. I have also heard that there may be a grin turning around as well.
Any other questions for Fred? I think it's apparent that you've done a wonderful job with Main Street, and some of us were at Rotary on Monday, and Lindsay came and did a wonderful presentation to Rotary on Monday about your Builders Academy, and I think you had four out of the seven new businesses that presented briefly on their businesses, and she did have pictures, by the way.
Good.
And so it was, it was a very good presentation, and I just think the whole concept of having a Builders Business Academy is really good, because a lot of people that wanna start small businesses, a lot of times, don't have a clue where they need to start, and having that extra support and mentoring from Lindsay in your office, I think is gonna make that program extremely successful. So thank you for developing that program.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council for Fred? Thanks, Fred. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, next up on the agenda, we have Claudia Gates, and she is going to provide a SMID update, which that stands for Self-Sustaining Municipal Improvement District. Nice little acronyms we all like to use, but a lot shorter than what I said.
I had to write that down to remember it. So yeah, I am on the SMID Committee, and I am a downtown property owner. We meet twice a year, and we decide what projects we wanna allocate. I provided a list here of what we have decided on, and so first, we decided to do the trash enclosure on Third Street. We've also made a budget for tree replacements to replace some of our trees downtown, green space improvements. So we're looking at doing a canteen alley signage for the 175th anniversary of the state of Iowa. We've allocated some funds for grants, matching grant funds, so that we can order a sound system for downtown, benches, seedings that will be solar bench seedings, and so all of this is in conjunction with us receiving grants for the, for the, some of these projects. Let's see. Fred talked about the Business Builder Academy Fund, and so we really like what was done this year, and so we've decided to fund that. So we've budgeted $10,000 to fund that project for next year. We really like the idea of helping new businesses start, providing them with the seed, seed funds for that, as well as expertise on what they need to do to make sure they're sustainable for the future, as well as sponsoring speaker classes and Business Brew sponsor, one for this year and one for next year. And finally, for our maintenance, we budgeted maintenance equipment for $5,000, as well as building, building maintenance for another $6,200. Any questions?
For the new council members, could you real briefly just kind of go over what, how SMID gets that money and how that works?
Yep. So we developed this SMID Committee about five years ago. Yeah, Fred's better.
So SMID is something that has to be voted on by the property owners in a district, and that was about three years ago that was done. 25% of the property owners have to agree, and 25% of the assessed value has to agree. And I think we had 72% of the property owners and 65%, somewhere in there, of the assessed value to do that. Anyway, long story short, so the, the, it's an extra property tax within that district that's collected that can only be used in that district. Does that make sense? Does that answer that question?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that people understood they were voting to put that additional tax on themselves to be improvements within that area.
That's right, and it does have to be voted on right now every five years, so it will be up for vote again in two years. Thank you.
Any other questions for Claudia?
I got one. Are you, how far along are you guys on the trash enclosure on Third Street, you know?
I just heard that part of it was completed.
We're just finishing the latches and a few details.
Nice. All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've only got one other quick comment I wanna make, and I forgot to mention it when Fred was talking. I did do a mayor's proclamation for Small Business Saturday on November 26th, and I know Main Street's promoting it, but I also know I asked Mita Tomwood also promote it, so I know Laura's trying to do that. And I would just continue to encourage everybody to support our small businesses, especially on Saturday, November 26th.
All right, and I just had a couple of quick updates under number three, the city admin report. One is regarding franchise fees, has been submitted to the two utilities that we're looking at. Everything is on track with those, with paperwork. They'll, their regulatory agencies will review all of everything, you know, then get sent to the Iowa Utility Board for their final review. We're looking at everything finalizing, taking effect after the first of the year, and so probably looking at the January, February bills, where those would start to show up for, for individuals. The other thing I wanted to mention on was last Wednesday, we did, we were able to get everything resolved and close on the depot and clubhouse. So those are now as of last Wednesday, under the ownership of the city. And that is all I had for this evening.
Does council have any questions for Phil? Okay, thank you, Phil. The next item on the agenda is where I ask anyone in the audience if they'd like to speak on any of the agenda items in our agenda tonight. Okay, we have no public hearings and no ordinances, so I guess we're ready to move to departmental recommendations.
We did table H1, so I'm gonna go to H2.
Okay.
Atoma Regional Airport Operations Overview and Update to Council. Recommendation, receive update and discuss possible restructure.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Since March of '21, when the city took over the airport operations, as far as the FBO side of it, a lot of things have changed at the airport. At the time we did this, everybody was kind of unsure on how it was gonna go and whether we was gonna be profitable or not, and I feel that we've really turned this around. I'll start out here with, the Iowa DOT sends out every year some information on what your airport does, and as you can see here in this one, it shows every place that people come to and people from Atoma would go to. And it's just, there's a lot more flights than that, but that just gives it a pretty broad spectrum of what we service out of Atoma. A lot of people never believe that we service the places that we do, but you never know who's gonna stop by at our airport. Just a few months ago, I was working a Saturday, and Marie Osmond come in, gets out of her airplane, lets her dog out, does its business, and they get fuel and they go on, you know, and we get to the fuel cells. This is like, this is, the Iowa DOT sends this out, again, and it's 14 people's employed at the airport. That's including city employees, like Wimco Tank, who has pilots over there, Musco has pilots, and it's, all the people that work at the airport is included into that. Some of those other numbers there is what they come up with, with the economic effect of having a airport in Atoma, the annual visitors that come through the airport. And this year, we went from being a general service airport to an enhanced service airport with the services that we now provide that hadn't been provided in the past, the length of our runway, the amount of stops we get. Just like this year, I mean, I look back today over the last 12 months, or it was actually the last 36 months. August 1st was the busiest day we'd ever had there, and there was 38 flights in and out of there in one day. Now, some of that is the students at Indian Hills, but still, that's a lot of activity for a local airport. In the last 21 months since the airport, since the city took over the airport operations, you can see the numbers there. And today, when I left, I went back from March, or from November 9th to today, to see what we had sold since then, to give us a true number. And 302,000 is what it says up there, and we've sold another 3,867 gallons since the 9th of November that wasn't in this total when we first put it up. With our location in the central region, we boost our fuel cells due to the high cost of fuel on both the east and the west coast. The east coast gets most of their fuel from Europe, is what our air fuel representative told us last week, and that's why they're like 13 gallons on, $13 a gallon on the east coast. And our fuel that we got in this last week, today, we changed our prices to $5.12 a gallon. So we're substantially cheaper, that's why we get a lot of the traffic that stops, we're in the middle of the country. Some of these airplanes can go coast to coast, but the ones that can't, we are there stopped because they can get in and out of there with quick fueling. They can get out, stretch their legs, get something to drink, use the restroom, and they're back going again. The average stop for them is 20 to 25 minutes, where if you go to a bigger airport, you could be there for quite a while, waiting to get clearance to get back out. Since September of '21, we've had a rental aircraft. And the last FBO before us, they had a rental, they had three rental airplanes, and over the, as the years went on, it dwindled down to where their last year and a half, two years there, they didn't have a rental aircraft available, and that created a lot of concern in the community. Well, we did find one that we rent, and since the airplanes came, we've had 37 different students. It says since March of '21, but that's actually since September of '21, because we didn't get the airplane until September of last year. By the end of this month, we'll have five students, and that should finish up everybody that we have currently trained since we took over and had rental aircraft available. And we do have a current list, and today, we start scheduling for the next group that we're gonna have. And we got 15 more students, that's all on the board there, and this is with zero advertising. We have not advertised for any flight instruction, any maintenance or anything, and it's just word of mouth. With that being said, our, our flight instructor, Duke Ball, he's kind of being pulled on both ends, because he's a flight instructor, plus our maintenance guy. So he works on all the airplanes, plus he teaches everybody how to fly. So he's, he's a very busy guy, and we've had everybody, we've got a 13-year-old kid from Bloomfield that comes over, he's taking flying lessons. He mows yards and pushes snow and shovel snow in the winter. That's how he pays for his flight lessons once a month. His parents bring him over, and we've got a 74-year-old guy who just, he's had his license in the past, he hadn't flown in 34 years. He came, we got him back up to speed, he flew about 25 hours with us, and now he's flying again on his own. He said it was a bucket list thing that he hadn't done in a lot of years, and he always had his license, he wanted to renew it and get going again. He comes out about once a month now, rents the airplane for a few hours a month. Our promotional events we've had at the airport, we've had four different promotional events. We had our open house in June of '21, when we did our ribbon cutting, and we had, it was a big turnout, but we had a lot of things going on. We had military aircraft that had came in, Bob Myers', his son-in-law, got us a military aircraft to come in. It was there, and we did a pancake breakfast that day, served about 150 people that day, and, but it was open, you know, a bigger public thing where people knew about it, it was pushed quite a bit. Our normal promotional events are only advertised on Iowa DOT and FAA websites. Not that we don't want the public out there, but it's more to get airplanes that come in, they stop in, they come and see what we've got to offer, they buy fuel. And the, what, the open house that we had this year in July, we had 27 new aircraft that had never been there before. We had 34 show up that day, but 27 had never been to Atoma before. And that's, you know, they, they stop in, and since then, we've had three of them that's come back for maintenance, for their annual inspection. They come and tour our, our facility and tour our maintenance shop and understand what all we have to offer. Coming in Tuesday on June 20th of 2023, we have the Air Race Classic coming through Atoma. This is 50 aircraft with a minimum of 100 female pilots. This is fifty aircraft with a minimum of a hundred female pilots, some aircraft will have three pilots in them, but it's an air, it's an air race across the country, and it starts on Tuesday morning in Grand Forks, North Dakota. Will be their second stop on the day in Atoma. They should arrive here sometime between eleven AM and two PM that day. They're going to come, there'll be a timing strip that they'll go through, then they can land, they're going to eat lunch with us, and take back off again after they get fueled up. And we were looking for any volunteers that want to come out in half that day, because it's, it should be a pretty big event, it's going to be pretty busy.
So you're going to cook hamburgers again?
You can cook hamburgers again. You did that for us this fall. We're currently finishing up our minimum standards for the airport. In the past, we've never had any minimum standards, and all this does is set a guideline that everyone must follow, whether you're, you know, you got your airplane there, whether you're visiting or whatever, we got, we're going to have minimum standards in place, so everyone runs off the same rulebook. There's a lot of things that's left open. Right now, people can bring in a mechanic from the outside, we're in business to be, we got a mechanic shop, we don't need somebody coming through the gate, hiring somebody from out of town to work on their airplane, or hauling fuel in in five-gallon jugs to fill their airplane up, that's not a safe manner to operate in anyways, and that's why we provide the service we do. But the fuel prices that we have, there's only one place in the Midwest that's got cheaper gas than we do, but we got the cheapest jet fuel you'll find in the Midwest. And the amount of fuel that we've went through, we went through like thirty-seven loads of just jet fuel alone since the city took over the FBO business. This year in July, we went through five loads, and that's because crop dusters were down a little bit because of how dry the summer was. The summer of twen, or July of twenty-one, we went through seven loads of jet fuel just in one month, basically the crop dusters and the corporate traffic coming through.
So this race is going to involve just female pilots, right?
It's just female pilots. Yes, it is. I know this don't have a lot to do with since we took over the FBO, but another thing that's brought a lot of attention at the airport lately is our farm ground. And we've had a lot of calls, people's curious about when we're going to put that out for bid again. As high as soybeans and corn is right now, we look for our land value to go up quite a bit, and it'll be next fall is when that'll be bid out again, after the harvest season next year.
How many acres?
Five hundred and thirty. We also have about two hundred and sixty acres of hay. And in that two hundred and sixty acres of hay, a hundred of it is stuff that's pretty good hay, the rest of it's stuff that if we didn't have that hay, we'd have to go mow it. So we're saving kind of money by putting that into our hay bid also, it saves us from having to run our equipment so much. The current price on our five hundred and thirty acres is two eighty-one an acre. The contract before this, I believe, was three twenty. And with the price of crops right now, I look for, it's going to be quite a bit higher than what it is right now. But like I said, I just covered kind of the FBO side of things, threw a little bit in about the farmland, but we also have all the properties that we have out there that we rent out, and leases and everything else. We've got new leases with Musco, accompanied with the FAA, we've got a new lease on a building out there, it just, things are pretty busy out there, it's more than just an airport.
I know I sound like a broken record when I say this, you know what I'm going to say, but I still hope we can explore at some point getting some commercial flights in and out of the Atoma Airport on a daily basis, because there's some other towns in Iowa that's comparable size to Atoma when they have that, and I don't know why we can't. So I'll be more than happy to help you with that at some point.
I'll remember that. Any other questions?
And that's going to be a three-day event?
No, it's a one-day event.
Okay.
It's just, Atoma's their second stop, and then when they leave here, they'll move on, so.
Thank you, JD.
Thank you.
So with that, one of the things that we've talked about with JD and with Duke is the structure out at the airport. Based on all of the contracts and everything that we have acquired recently, so JD spoke about, we now have a rental plane, which was not something that we had before, offering the maintenance and the different things that they do offer out at the airport with flight lessons, that was not part of the original plan, and within the last sixteen months or so, we've added those types of services. So as we've sat and as we've looked at the current structure of the airport, we do feel that there is some restructuring that we need to do, simply because what we have on paper is not accurate to what we actually have working out at the airport. So this is what our current structure looks like. We have a Director of Airport Operations, which our airport line technicians report directly to that Director of Airport Operations. Our airport line technicians are the people that are out there fueling up the planes. So when we do have someone that comes in, they call into the airport, make sure that they can get in, the airport line technicians go out, they fill up the plane, any other small type of things that they need, that's what those airport line technicians do. Then we have our Airport Facilities Manager, who reports directly to the Director of Airport Operations, and then we have two airport maintenance workers that are out there. So that's what our current structure looks like. But like I said, unfortunately, as we have added these other contracts and these other things, we don't currently reflect what is actually going on out at the airport. So one of the things that we did was we did work with finance, and we looked at finances. So the airport has its own fund, it is not part of the general fund, it is absolutely part of its own fund. In July first of twenty-twenty-one, that fund balance was just about three hundred thousand dollars. From the revenues and the expenditures that we have seen this year, the airport has been able to add almost eighty thousand dollars to that fund just this year. So keep in mind some of these fuel cells that we've had, and we've seen an increase here lately because of renegotiated contracts, and some of the other things that JD and Duke have been able to do out there. So our current fund balance as of June thirtieth for the airport alone is almost three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's what our fund balance is, that's what finance has been able to provide to us. So as we've sat and as we've looked at this, we've talked to, kind of, again, with JD and Duke and also others, about what should that restructure look like? What accurately reflects what is going on at our airport, and also what's going to allow for future growth? As, you know, the mayor talks about adding commercial flights out there, as JD talks about our maintenance is, we are booked completely, we have no capacity to add anything. So what does that look like? So this would be our proposed current, or our proposed airport restructure, where essentially what we would do is, we would take and we would create an aviation services supervisor. That aviation services supervisor would be in charge of maintenance and flight lessons. Currently, we do not have that in any job description anywhere that is not a service, anything that any of our current employees are supposed to be performing, but within that last year, we have added those services, last sixteen months or so. We've added those services with that rental plane and the maintenance contracts that we've gotten with Indian Hills and also with private pilots. So what we would do is we would add that aviation services supervisor currently. For future growth, that would allow us then to add an aviation maintenance technician, to be able to bring more maintenance technicians in, to be able to work on planes, whether it's through Indian Hills, whether it's through private pilots. However that looks, we would be able to take in more of that maintenance business. We would also like to, in the future, add an airport secretary. As pilots come in, they're going to call into the airport to make sure that we've got fuel available, find out what the prices are, make sure that they can land appropriately, and if we are not there to answer those phones or to answer those phone calls, they may skip us completely. So we would like to add that airport secretary, not right now, but in the very near future, that would be something that we would like to add as well. So with this restructure, that would essentially eliminate the Airport Facilities Manager, but it would create that aviation services supervisor to run that airport that's out there. So one of the things we looked at was, we looked at cost of what that would take, and that's what you've got here. So one of the things that city administrator, myself, Duke, and JD sat down is, we said, okay, where can we, can we afford this? Based on what is in that airport fund, adding, we've added seventy-eight thousand dollars to that this last year, so we've got that over three hundred thousand dollar airport fund. Making the current restructure of just adding that aviation supervisors supervisor and eliminating that Airport Facilities Manager, it will cost us nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. From a fund that's got three hundred and some thousand dollars in it, we can absolutely afford to do that for just that restructure. As we continue to move forward, adding that part-time secretary would be another approximately twenty thousand dollars to that, twenty-five thousand dollars. And again, as we continue to see those fuel cells come, as we continue to see more maintenance come, this can kind of outline for us what we can afford, and as we can move forward to bring more money into that. Based on what we've seen as far as the fund balance, we are healthy enough to be able to do the current restructure, and that's what we would propose tonight. We have talked with finance about it, and making sure that our numbers are correct, making sure that we're thinking correctly, and that's what we've come up with. So you'll see something later on tonight for approving that restructure, and essentially it would be just that restructure only, would be adding the aviation services supervisor and eliminating our Airport Facilities Manager.
But don't you also want approval from the council to eventually add the secretary position too?
Eventually, that's not something we brought to tonight.
Okay. All right.
The only other thing that I didn't mention earlier is, I looked at what we had budgeted in the last year for fuel at this time, and we've sold two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents more fuel as of now than what we had already budgeted for. So we're, we're way over budget on our fuel cells, and with the new contracts that she mentioned that we've got, it's, it's only going to get bigger. Our, our main fuel customer is getting ready to purchase a different aircraft that's going to use another fifty percent more fuel, and we put eight hundred and fifty gallons of fuel in them this morning before they left for Tennessee. So I mean, you can do the math, the next time that happens, it'll be twelve hundred and seventy-five gallons. So with the purchase of their new aircraft, and they've hired another pilot, that things are just going to continue to grow.
Keep growing, you're going to have to get a bigger gas tank.
We've talked about that.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
Does counsel have any questions for JD or Barb?
I just wanted to add one thing. So kind of talking about this restructure and talking about sixteen, when the city was operating under that contract and FBO, there were some of these things, some of these positions and things that were kind of absorbed by that. And so they had somebody that was operating as a secretary, they had somebody that was supposed to maintain all of the, the leases, sell the fuel, employ the line techs, that's why that model initially kind of had that, it was modeling what was there. But as we were able to, as was mentioned, increase the maintenance, increase the flight instruction, things that the airport board wanted to have out there but wasn't being offered under that past contracts, well, past contracts, that's where the change is really looking at. Utilizing the resources we have, taking advantage of the revenue coming in from those things, being able to supplement that, grow the airport, potentially looking at being able to add that commercial service or other things, you got to have the, the right resources in place, and, and I think that's probably why we don't have it currently, and there's a build out there, but there isn't staffing to do anything with that. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I think there's been a lot of success there, and looking at capitalizing on that, continuing to grow that airport. It's one of the economic development hubs for, for the city.
So I have a question, and maybe this is a Barb question. So with this restructure, I know we're also doing the Gallagher study, right? Gallagher, okay. So are we going to, and when that is complete, are you going to come back and say that we need to increase or decrease because of that study with these positions? And I'm talking about wages.
There's always that possibility. As we went out and as we looked at this and looked at what market rates were, we are low either one of those positions. I was looking at, I want to say the national average for a, a aviation maintenance supervisor was anywhere between ninety to a hundred and twenty thousand a year. So there is a possibility, but it would not be as drastic as maybe some of our other positions, because I, we've been able to do that market study.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for JD or Barb? Okay. Thank you very much.
Just one question. So if we're effectively creating a new position here, why wouldn't we, and I, maybe you have a good reason for this, but to counsel person Galloway's question, if we're creating a new position, why wouldn't we look at the adjustment now as opposed to having to make a second adjustment at some point down the road? I mean, it, it seems almost like spinning wheels. If, if we're creating a brand-new position, we look at what the value of that position is right now, instead of saying, oh, we'll attach it later down the road. I mean, just from the employee's sake, that seems a little odd.
From what the information that we've been able to gather from Gallagher is that any of the other cities that we have identified as being our competitors, or like that we want comparative information, they don't run their airport, so we're not going to be able to get comparable information from those cities from, like we are with the rest of our positions in that study. They do have published data, but that's not anything that they are willing just to hand over and say, hey, here's what we've got. We have notified them that this is a position that we are looking at, and that they would include that when they do provide us the published data. The information that we've been able to gather is just from national averages and looking at what's out there.
Okay.
So it, it may be something that we may come back, but like I said, it should not be much more just because we have done that research.
The other thing maybe just to consider with that too, is I understand what your, your question is there, this position would be, we have the chart of the org chart, would be below the position that's already created. So if that one were to be higher paid than one that's already there, that could create a pay disparagement that wouldn't exist otherwise. If we have a, a good fitting salary now, and then all of the salaries are increased at whatever percentage, I think it'd move it a little bit cleaner. Does that make sense? There's a, there's an opportunity, if that, if that position is coming back at ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, that's more than what the Director of Airport Operations makes now, so that position would be paid higher than the Director of Airport Operations.
So I guess, I guess if you're, if we, if we have no point of comparability right now, not that I'm against this move, but if we have no point of comparability now, and we don't know where any of these positions are going to land with the, with the employee study, are we premature on making this adjustment?
I think we are.
We need, one of the things that we need to do is we need to be able to account for what our employees are actually doing, because that is not being done currently. And even with, with the PDQs that we have gotten back, this is something that we've never accounted for in the year and a half since we've taken these things over. So this is something that we need to make sure that we are properly accounting for what our employees are actually doing right now.
So the job descriptions and the titles that you're proposing more accurately reflect what the current staff are doing?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I was just wondering, how soon are we looking at the study being completed?
We're still on track to have it in February, beginning of March.
Thank you.
And as Barb said, there'll be another place in the agenda under a resolution where the council's going to be asked to approve this restructuring plan.
And one thing to keep in mind with that, study being completed, that's the study being completed, that's not actually implementation of that study. So that's just something for us to think about with this. Again, the funds are there in that airport fund, and this is a change to accurately reflect what our employees are currently doing based on the services that we are offering based on the contracts that we've already signed.
The only thing that I'd be concerned about to, to your point in that is, you know, looking at the restructure with all of these added positions, I understand that we have increased sales, which is great, it's exactly what we wanted to have happen, but two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars becomes three to five percent higher the next year, and, you know, we've been sitting at that, having that, that balance right around that three hundred thousand dollars for a couple of years. So increasing these salaries, even if we do increase sales, we're going to be knocking down that fund balance pretty quickly, and that's what's being used to fund our maintenance and all of the, the improvements that we have out there. So before we go adding a lot of positions, I'd really like to see a, a solid plan on how we intend to increase the revenues or decrease expenses in other areas, that way we can ensure that we keep our fund balance sound.
And I, and I think that was why it was only recommended to do the restructure at this point, not adding those other positions to verify with more time that those things are happening and those contracts are being maintained, definitely not adding a full-time maintenance, that bottom one, until it was verified that, that amount of work was there for that. You know, we've got more than enough work for one person, but not necessarily enough work for two full-time people. So you want to definitely have that. I agree with that one hundred percent.
Good.
If there's no other questions, thank you JD and Barb. Next, we'll move to resolutions.
Resolution, resolution number two sixty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, removing specialist assessment applied to three sixteen Gera on resolution number two oh nine, twenty-twenty-one. resolution number 209, 2021. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 268, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
Okay, Zach, I believe you're going to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. The property at 316 Gera had a special assessment applied on resolution 209, 2021. The assessment was in the amount of $275, and there's since, excuse me, 8% interest and 5% administrative fees added to that. The owner contested whether the mowing was actually done. And staff did look back at the file and was able to identify from the case file that the property was mowed on a date prior to what the billing said that it was mowed on, which does at least indicate that the property owner might be right, that he mowed it himself, and that the contractor mistakenly billed us for the mowing. So staff recommends removing the assessment since we can't verify that the mowing was actually done.
Does council have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Resolution number 269, 2022, approving the professional services agreement for engineering services between J E O Consulting Group and the City of Atumwa for the Mary Street from Ferry Street to Shaw Avenue reconstruction project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 269, 2022.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Larry, I believe you're going to present.
Thank you, Mayor, council. J E O Consulting Group shall assist the City of Atumwa with evaluation design for a full reconstruction of Mary Street, Ferry Street to Shaw Avenue, along with pavement widening for turn lanes at Liberty Elementary School, drives, storm sewer design, including drainage report, sanitary sewer design, water main design, and sidewalk design meeting ADA requirements. The design includes evaluation of right-of-way requirements and development of easement plaits as needed. The city will coordinate and negotiate with property owners as needed and determined by overall design requirements. The city has allocated their surface transportation funds as approved by Area 15 Regional Planning affiliation members in the amount of $2,55,354. With the current material and price increases we've experienced, we plan on submitting a request for funding increases from our STP or State Transportation Funding Program. Design standards will follow the Iowa DOT design standards, along with supplemental requirements for federal aid projects. All documents will be submitted to the city for review prior to the date set by the Iowa DOT's critical path letting memo. Atumwa Water Works has determined that 400 linear feet of water main will be replaced and have agreed to reimburse the city for actual design costs. Again, the source of funds is our STBG funds, road use, and lost. The project would be programmed for a fiscal year 2024 construction season, and the design contract will be funded from local funds. This is a $225,000 lump sum contract. I do have a small drone video just to kind of update council on the corridor. It's been a few years. One of the things that we've done, we are allocated a certain dollar amount each year. You're allowed to bank up to five years to build your funds for larger projects. That's what we've done. So basically, we're looking down Mary Street, starting at the west end at Shaw Avenue. And then at the end of this little video, we just wanted to give you kind of a bird's eye view of the corridor. We have done an extensive patch job in the past. The pavement has kind of reached the end of its useful life. And with the need for improvements along Liberty School, again, we'll include some turn lanes to relieve traffic during the beginning of school and, of course, at the end of school sessions. Give you a minute just to kind of view this.
So the only part of Mary Street that would actually get widened is closer to Libertyville School, where you're going to put it in the turning lanes, right? You're not really widening all of Mary Street?
No, we would actually look at that corridor. One of the things, trends that are occurring in current design is looking at actually narrowing pavements, if possible, to decrease not only your cost, but impervious surfaces within your community. The turn lanes would be at the Traxler Drive, which is the east entrance and the west entrance. School uses it for parent drop off and the bus drop off. We would look at how do we relieve that in order to stop some of the backup issues we have, again, in the morning and the afternoon.
And we'll have sidewalks?
That's one of the things we want to look at, is do we put sidewalks? How do we evaluate it? It would be one side. We wouldn't recommend both. Right now, just in the review, we're looking at the north side. We definitely want to make sure we improve from the school down to Ferry. That is the walkways for the school. They're actual walk plans.
Did you say north side?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys are also going to look at, like, speed areas through there, ways to reduce the speed, traffic speed. Because as of right now, with the way it is, people can't speed through there. But you know, when you flatten that out, you know what you're going to get. So you guys are going to look at that as well, correct?
Well, I mean, there's certain things you can do. You can design it for posted speeds. Then there's an enforcement issue. You don't actually add. A lot of people believe that speed bumps are for speed control. You know, we got into that at Carter Ave. We don't do speed bumps on Main Line. There's a specific reason. Here's one of the things I'd wanted to point out. It's probably the short part. You can see it, of course, in the afternoon, just departing. It's like that in the mornings, maybe the opposite. It backs up through Ferry, because people are trying to stop and turn into that access point for parent drop off. This is where we would look at how do we configure? Do we put a center turn lane, similar to Albia Road, which would allow, if you're westbound, to bypass the turning traffic? That's what we're looking at.
So Larry, I guess I have a question. Wouldn't it seem more logical to put the sidewalk on the side of the street where the school's actually located instead of the opposite?
Every, somewhere the kids have to cross the street to get over. I mean, you look at the area as a whole. That hasn't been determined yet. We'll do that through the design. But if you look on the south side, you're serving a reduced number of residents. And if you have traffic, it's going to come from the north side. And then you want to get them to a place they can cross controlled. Currently, the school is using rollout stop signs at a couple of different locations. So working with them, that's part of the pedestrian routing that is supposed to be developed between the school and the city. It's just replaying now, isn't it?
You also have to look at available and accessible property for that, too?
We will.
Yeah.
You know, it's a matter of, yeah, how do you change your alignment? We've got quite a bit of right-of-way, but how do you do that and have the least impact on all of the properties? I mean, through retaining walls, we have went through and actually stayed within the existing right-of-way. Then you just reduce, you know, you have to balance your cost right-of-way purchase versus retaining walls.
Council have any questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Thank you, Larry.
Resolution number 270, 2022, approving the final plat of Carroll Seventh Edition in the City of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 270, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Anytime somebody proposes to divide one parcel into more than two parcels, that requires a subdivision and a process that's laid out in Chapter 33 of the city code. And this is the last step of that process. The applicant is requesting approval for a 3.81 acre, four lots contiguous area to be subdivided into four new lots. These new lots would be sold to adjacent property owners, and they would have deed restrictions, which would ensure that the parcels which are sold would have access to public rights of way through the lots that they'd be attached to. The lots themselves satisfy the minimum sizes set out in the zoning district. And the final version of the plat, which is what's been presented here, is in conformance with the requirements of Chapter 33. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did review and approve the final plat at the November 7th meeting.
Zach, the question, I guess I had when I reviewed the packet, it wasn't real clear to me. The four lots that are going to be sold to these four property owners, is that just to increase their property parameters? Or are they going to buy these lots and do something and build something on them, or?
I don't know that. The process doesn't really ask us to inquire about that, but I don't believe they intend to do anything with them. I think they just want to add them to the property they have and use and enjoy. I don't think the way that it's set up, it would facilitate really building anything on them very, in the near future.
Does council have any questions for Zach?
So didn't we have a situation where someone wanted to buy property and we wouldn't sell because they weren't going to build anything?
We don't own this. This belongs to the Carols.
Okay, so that's why they can split it. That's, okay, I'm just clarifying.
This belongs to somebody. The only reason that the city has anything to do with it is that they're dividing it into more than two lots, and there's a process for dividing a subdivision that has to be approved.
They've also included, that's got one of our pump stations on it, and there's four separate easements that go through here. This is basically a creek bottom. So I'm not sure, other than one lot that might be buildable, the others are not.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Resolution number 271, 2022, approving a one-time retention bonus for eligible employees through specified ARPA funding. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 271, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
Okay, Barb.
So the city staff sat down and we were going through prioritizing how to use some ARPA funds. And one of the things that we had talked about was being able to offer a retention bonus for our staff. This is one of the approved reasons to actually utilize these ARPA funds. Given everything that we've seen with the pandemic and we're seeing currently with inflationary rates and everything like that, we need to do something to thank our employees for all of the hard work that they have done, for the employees that have stuck with us and continue to stick with us as we continue some of our initiatives. So what we've talked about doing is a payout for our current full-time employees that would be eligible for four $500 payments. Any part-time employees that are budgeted and work 20 hours or more a week would be eligible for $250. These would be paid. There's four different timelines, and those correlate with our fiscal year. So if employees, if they were employed by like December 31st of 2021, they would be eligible for one payment. The next six months, it would be eligible for another payment. And then our first payment would actually encompass two of these payments, and we would make that payment in December. And then the other two, as employees stay with us, we would offer them that payment at later dates down the road as well.
So the part-time people, just for transparency, would also be eligible for force installments?
Yes, correct.
At a lower rate?
Yes, at the $250. Yep.
Does any council have any questions for Barb? I think it's the right thing to do, to show that we value our employees, especially with the pandemic, the last couple of years. This is a small way that we can really let them know that we really value them. And it is a means of being able to be done with these ARPA funds, which is one-time funding. So I'm in support of it.
Agreed.
We really appreciate everything that all of our employees have done. They're all working very hard. We're very short-staffed. I mean, we're not getting applications. It's everything that everybody else is facing. Yeah, this is kind of the least that we can do for them.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Barb, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Resolution number 272, 2022, approving staffing restructure at the Atumwa Regional Airport. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 272, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Barb.
So this is just the approval for the restructure. Again, from that slide that we had, this would be just the restructure only, which would be to create that aviation services supervisor position, which is what we are currently operating at now. It would not be approval for the part-time secretary or anything at that point. We want to make this restructure. We want to get through our, some of the other things that they've got going on, and then be able to reevaluate as we go to adding that secretary and maintenance person when we deem that that is feasible to do.
Council have any questions for Barb?
I got a question on the year salary. Is that a pay raise, or is that regular pay?
For which? On the aviation services supervisor?
Authorized, yes.
That's the current pay of the director of airport operations.
Okay.
Any other questions for Barb? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 273, 2022, approving change order number one to the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of 153 South Fellows. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 273, 2022.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This is something that hasn't come up yet for us. We had work begun on an asbestos abatement contract, and the contractor during that work identified some duct wrap material that he suspected contained asbestos. That wasn't as part of the original asbestos report and hadn't been identified before. Testing did confirm that the material did contain asbestos, and so completing the project would have added that item. And it was found throughout the home and required significantly more work, tearing out each of the walls and then removing those ducts to get the duct, sort of, wrap removed from each of the ducts. The contractor proposed a change order to account for this additional work, which would increase the contract sum by $6,680, which would make the new contract sum for asbestos abatement and demolition $37,980.
Was the asbestos kind of hidden at the time, and they just didn't realize it? Is that why the change order had to be requested?
It was in the wall. And so I think that probably the test firm that we use to do the testing probably should have found it. And it's unfortunate, unfortunate they didn't find it. And we'll be making sure that they try to look for this sort of thing better going forward. But it was somewhat hard to find compared to, you know, floor tile and things like that.
You don't always know what's behind the sheet rock.
This cost is kind of in line with what we normally pay for asbestos removal, isn't it? I mean, normally it's like $4,000 or $5,000, so it's not too far out of line. Well, this is in addition to what we'd already awarded for asbestos abatement, which was, in this case, over $10,000 already. It's, we looked at it back and forth quite a bit. We tried to look at other similar jobs. So I think we'd already awarded about $12,000 for asbestos abatement. This would increase the total amount for asbestos abatement to $18,980, which is on the higher end, but is not the most expensive asbestos job we've had. And so looking at it with the contractor already mobilized and the situation as it is, we did recommend go ahead and approving the change order.
And you have to abate it before they can demolish the building, so.
Yeah.
Does council have any other questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Thanks, Zach. This is a time in our city council meeting where I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any item that's not on our agenda tonight. And I know we have one individual that would like to do that. And I'll ask Peggy to come forward. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item tonight? Okay, if not, Peggy, you want to come up and state your name and your address?
Hello, Mayor and council. I am here, my name is Katie Keith, and I am with New Compassions here in Atumwa. And I wanted to bring to your attention an event that is happening this Saturday from 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. And it is called Link Up Atumwa. And it is specifically to bring resources to those who are unhoused or facing housing insecurity. We are very pleased with how this event has come together. We have approximately 17 to 18 agencies that are going to be represented. We've actually had over 40, almost 40 volunteers. We've actually had over 40, almost 40 volunteers that are going to be helping with that event. We are being sponsored by Community First Credit Union and the Atumwa Rotary, and there's some other potential sponsors that are still kind of finalizing things this week. I did bring some flyers. We're just trying to continue to spread the word for this event. And some of the agencies that we do have coming are River Hills, First Resources, SITA, NAMI, the Central Iowa Shelter and Services, Area 15, South Central Behavioral Health Region, just to name a few. The Bridge Church also is going to be there with their Christmas store sign-ups, and we have all of the other things like haircut vouchers and winter boot vouchers for children that we're going to be able to have parents fill out to get winter boots for their kids. And Blessings is allowing us to use their, the Blessings Soup Kitchen that day as a bus stop, and we are finalizing the transportation, but we'll be able to run transportation from Blessings to, it's actually being held at the First Church, the Open Bible. We're able to use their facility for free to host this event. So that is just what I wanted to bring to your attention this evening.
And I know Oskaloosa's done this for several years now, so is the intent, if this is successful this coming Saturday, hopefully this will become an annual event, hopefully?
Yes, absolutely. I had the opportunity with my own family to walk through and participate in Mahaska Connect myself, to kind of fully immerse in what that experience is like. So this is really based on my own personal experience with what I had at Mahaska Connect and tailored to how it could really fit with Wapalo County.
Does New Compassion have any even generalized numbers or an idea of how many homeless people we have living right now in the City of Atumwa?
I do not. However, I have read the Resilient Communities, their study. I don't know, you know, off the top of my head, but I do know that Mahaska Connect's numbers of people that they actually serve was around 180. And so I don't know, with it being our first year, that we would necessarily reach that many, but we obviously are hopeful, being urban and urban-ish, and, you know, larger than Oskaloosa, we might hit that.
And it's really difficult to actually identify our numbers in Atumwa because homeless or people living in homelessness have different definitions in many areas, but we are comparable to that of Des Moines, meaning like our ratios, and statistically, we're comparable.
And I would say that is why we've specifically been kind of targeting those, we say, that are unhoused, homeless, or those facing housing insecurity, because, you know, like Council President Galloway said, you know, homelessness or unhoused looks different in many different ways, so.
A lot of different agencies define homeless different ways, so it's kind of hard to come up with the genuine number sometimes, but we know there's homeless people, people that have homeless or home insecurity. So I think it's a wonderful event. I'm planning I'll go on Saturday, and I'd encourage the Council and everybody in this room to try and go at least and participate for a little bit. It's from 10 to 3, I think, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct.
Anyone have any questions they'd like to ask? Okay, well, thank you very much.
And we'll leave flyers somewhere.
You can bring them up to us. Yeah, we can pass them out. Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else that would like to speak, we'll move to Mayor, City Council report, and any communications. I don't have an actual report to make tonight, but I guess there is one communication that I'd also like to put out there. The Canadian Pacific Railroad is going to, again, this year, have a holiday train that stops in Atumwa on Sunday, December 4th, from 10 to 10:30 in the morning, and they will present a brief Christmas program. Santa Claus is going to be there, and the whole impetus behind this is to have anyone from the public who wants to come and observe this little show outside to bring food items or money, because the proceeds will go to the Food Bank of Iowa as a way of helping get more food and money for the food bank during the holiday season. So I would really encourage everybody to come. I think the last time the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train came through Atumwa was 2018. So we're kind of excited that it's time for them to come again, and I hear their show is really pretty phenomenal that they do, so encourage everybody to come out. It'll be at the Canadian Pacific Depot, which is not the depot downtown, it's the one across from Coles on Wildwood Drive. So don't go to the depot downtown. Go to the depot across from Coles on Wildwood Drive. Does Council have any communications or anything they'd like to add? Oh, you got, you grabbed the mic. I thought you were going to say something.
Nope, not today.
Thought you were going to sing, maybe. I didn't know. Okay, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight's Board of Health meeting and our city council meeting. Safe travels home. Yeah, I'd, I'd say that.